We're on live now, it's eleven forty AM, sorry about the delay for our technical difficulties. It's January twentieth. This is the regular Board of Commissioners meeting for Fire District Twenty One. And I will start with roll call, I'm Bruce Ansel.
Rich Bossman.
John Crawford.
Kimberly McMurray.
Jason Mannerby.
Scott Brown.
Chief Ward is here. All right, as far as public comment goes, the public can hear and see us live on YouTube, except for executive session and will not be allowed to speak or provide public comment. With that, also we'll note that Commissioner Fisher is still excused for medical reasons. Open the Volunteer Pension Board Meeting, I need a motion to approve the December sixteenth minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Unanimous? And then Chief, we have an invoice voucher, is this an annual thing?
Yes, sir, for the pension disability for twenty twenty-two.
So this, this covers the payment for the active volunteers that we have.
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve the invoice voucher of one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars for the volunteer pension?
So moved.
Okay.
Discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Unanimous, any other issues for the Pension Board Chief?
Oh, sir.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and adjourn the Pension Board Meeting and open the regular Board of Meeting, Commissioners Meeting with our oath of office so that Commissioner Crawford can vote during this meeting. That's my understanding that Commissioner McMurray, you have already performed that oath of office with Jenny in late November. All right. So Mr. Crawford, congratulations on winning a hard fought election and if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, we'll give you the oath of office and then when you come in Jenny can notarize that. I, John Crawford.
I, John Crawford.
Do solemnly swear. Uh-oh.
Did I freeze up or did you freeze up?
You froze up, sorry.
I, John Crawford.
Do solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
And discharge the duties of the office.
And discharge the do-
Duties of the office.
Duties of the office, froze up, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Fire Protection District Twenty-One Commissioner Position One.
Of the Fire District Twenty-One Commissioner Position One.
In and for the County of Watcom.
In and for the County of Watcom.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome back, nice to have you on board.
Thank you.
All right, you are now officially able to vote at this meeting and Jenny will do the final details when you come in to sign documents. Um, here, we are waiting, I had invited Mike Kent to our meeting. Jason's muted.
I, sorry, I sent him another invite, ask him if he's able to join us, I'll-
Okay, well, I was gonna bump him up. When he arrives, we'll rearrange the agenda to not waste any of his precious time, but with that said, we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes December thirteen joint meeting minutes, December sixteen, public hearing, staff reports, financial reports. January was a big expenditure month, if you saw that almost million dollar number that we spent and Chief, maybe you could let us know as a group why that number was so big this month.
Certainly, January, everything comes up for renewal, so insurance, almost ninety thousand dollar expenditure for our vehicle and facility insurance. We had fifty thousand dollars for bunker gear that was ordered last year and did not arrive until December and then we were invoiced. So that's an additional, that's, we order ten sets per year so that everybody's got two, two sets a year. So there's an additional fifty thousand dollars, we've got two months worth of Oasis at six thousand dollars apiece because they build late in February, excuse me, in December. And then all of the state, Washington State Fire Commissioners, Washington State Fire Chiefs, everybody renews all of their memberships in January and because they have not been able to have meetings or get togethers where they make some money, they have all changed their due structure. It'd be quite a bit more expensive than than we have in the past, so that is what has led us to this one-off of the January vouchers.
All right, so the, the, the total expenditures for January were nine hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Big number, I don't think we could manage that for twelve months in a row and obviously won't have to, but the direct deposit payroll was three hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred nine and sixty cents. That includes vacation and sick time payouts for the end of the year. Payroll taxes eighty-three thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Benefits voucher, two hundred seven thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventeen cents. Monthly expenditure voucher, two hundred seventy-seven thousand fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Capital projects apparatus. Five hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Chief, I noticed in one of the reports, responses up every month except January of last year. Like significantly up every month, is that? Do you know why that, did we have a down year the year before, is this more normal, where, what's, what's driving?
Twenty twenty was down, especially the first quarter and a half, two quarters was down when, that was when the stay-at-home order issue was issued and people were seemingly significantly afraid of going to the hospital or reaching out for medical care. Since then, last year, obviously in July, we started dealing with House Bill thirteen-ten, which has caused an increase in calls. What, what we're seeing on the west side of the county and for us, in particular, is about a twenty percent call volume increase based on mental health and, and what we call P-dunks or PD, unknown calls, welfare checks and things like that, the crews are going on. As well as just an increase in calls, whether it's people staying home, fatigue, just general fatigue in society and they're just asking us, they're asking the crews to help with more simple problems. I think. We're just, we've just become the catch-all.
Appreciate that. Any other questions, comments? All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Unanimous, consent agenda is approved. Commissioner Meeting Report. John.
You want to all county or do you want to talk about it?
Um, I, I can hum a few bars about that, it was-
Feel free.
So the Watcom County Fire Commissioner Association Meeting was on, I want to say the twelfth. I attended kind of interesting meeting, I not a lot of people talk. Everybody's been busy with the floods and the weather and, and everything, but one of the reasons I attended was to sort of push this BLS funding issue to the county via a letter of support from the fire commissioners. And so there was some discussion and a motion was passed to send a letter to the county EMS players and potentially the King or the Watcom County Council just showing our unanimous support by the fire commissioners for freeing up some of these surplus funds that are, are sitting in the EMS levy pool, so we are in the process of drafting a letter and it actually got the support of the fire chiefs as well, and so it looks like it's going to be a joint letter from the Watcom County Fire Chiefs and Watcom County Fire Commissioners requesting that the county free up five million dollars of the projected nine million in funds that aren't encumbered by a twelve million dollar reserve fund, so basically twenty-one million dollars are sitting there, twelve of it is in case the levy doesn't pass and there's nine sitting there, which the chiefs and commissioners are asking for five million to be split with a formula that seemed to work well for all the jurisdictions that could be used to help support the increased workload that has been generated on the BLS side. And that's not just because of thirteen-ten, that's just, some of it has to do with levy lid lift failure, some of it has to do with weather, some of it has to do with increased transport times, there's a lot of things that are driving increased costs for all departments, the outlawing ones, harder to get volunteers. You know, like I say, transporting is, is taking longer and longer, now the hospital's backing up, there's longer wait times, it's just, it's costing districts a lot of money, so we're respectfully requesting that they send some of that to the departments countywide. So I've seen the second to last final draft, it, it needs to go out probably by the end of this week or the first part of next week. There is a meeting of the finance group, I believe, February ninth is, is the next milestone, so we kind of wanted to get in front of them showing our support, so it would, it would be a huge benefit to North Watcom as well. Um, the second one I had was the chief and I met with one of our citizens that had expressed a willingness to help us with our messaging after our levy lid lift failures, we had about a two and a half hour meeting with Margot and she's got experience in sort of public messaging, worked in Canada, worked nationally. So she's sort of working on some ideas for us to see if we can have a better outreach in any future messaging that we come up with. What else am I missing, Chief, let's see?
I think that's-
Yeah, I'm, again, I met again with a couple of the chiefs and commissioners on that letter. Yeah, anyone else? Was that, was that accurate, John?
Yeah, I think it was a pretty spot on.
And if anyone's interested in being the president of the Watcom County Fire Commissioners, please raise your hand now. Some names came up, I, I respectfully declined the opportunity to participate in that position based on what I feel is going to be a pretty busy year, working with District Four on those issues, so. And I didn't see John raise his hand either, so.
No, no.
I mean, if, you know, Rich, if you, or Kimberly, I mean, if you know of anybody, if you know of anyone in the commissioner ranks who you think would be a good fit or representative to that position, we've been asked to sort of canvas our members and, and others, so if, if in in your communications with people in the community, if you know anyone who might fill that position, John, Jim Peoples has sort of reached his capacity both with family and medical issues and can no longer continue in that vein, so they need to have a replacement step up for that.
Mr. Hansel, if I could, just real quick, that was, the person we met with was Margot Savelle. Just so that her, yeah, just so that her last name was on the record.
Thank you. And I guess, yeah, we, we intend to have another follow-up meeting with her, I guess we can reach out and see, she was going to put some stuff together and then, and then we can go from there, plus I think we need to sort of tie that in with our messaging with District Four too, I think. But we'll figure that one out. All right, anything else under Commissioner Meetings? Local one oh six, Scott Brown.
All right, well, thanks for having me. First and foremost, just want to thank all the personnel, we're beginning hit pretty hard with COVID, myself included. So they're doing a great job picking up the slack with a bunch of us that are out. We did just have some recent promotional, or promotional assessments, so some personnel got promoted, so special shout out to Chris Hollander for all his hard work and all the other ones. We did hire a training captain, so look forward to meeting with him and working with him. And at this time, that's kind of all I have, so just again, thanks to all the crews for working through this tough time.
And I understand perhaps you were a part of that promotional process as well?
Uh, yes, I was, I, I got promoted as well, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, legal issues. Richard Davis is not here, I, I did have a discussion with him about something, we'll talk about in executive session, but I don't think there's anything hot off the press as far as legal mandates right now. Unfinished business, one of that, while under facilities, we'll probably let Chief Ward maybe update us on any items and then that's kind of where we need to talk about the Wiser Lake Station, so Chief Ward.
I just wanted to give you a heads up, Barantel Communications closed shop on the thirty-first of December. And so currently we are investigating options for the system that was built back in two thousand and seven for our station phones and looking at what other options we can have that gives us stability rather than some hardwired system that we currently have been band-aiding for many years. The cold snap that we had caused some damage at a couple of the stations, Station Sixty-Three's dry system, which is in the tower, that is completely destroyed. I'm working with the county right now to get a variance on that, on the tower itself, so we don't have to have it fixed. That's the only part of the Station Sixty-Three that has a dry system in it. We don't know when it was put in or why it was put in, because it's not a burn tower and it doesn't hold any flammable materials in it, so and it's, it's a brick structure, so, but it had, had a system in it. Station Sixty-One had a flood or multiple sprinkler heads break, it was in the gear storage area. That's all been fixed, but we are going to have to file an insurance claim on that due to sheetrock damage and it's going to require re-insulation and some minor construction repairs. So we'll be working on getting that done. That's kind of really about, about it, the biggest, like I said, the biggest thing that we're really trying to hit right now is the, the phone system, we want to make sure that we don't end up having the system go down and we don't have phones. We're, we're kind of running with a semi-fixed system right now that doesn't allow us to even have voicemail. And so we're kind of pressing along, moving forward with Oasis Tech and, and what they're able to offer for their IT side of things as well as working with another company that Chief found out through Costco and that's probably the direction we'll end up going, but we're still working on that, so.
Anything else? Roof repairs at Sixty-One or?
Sixty-Three is complete, that's, that's all, that's all, that's all been done, we did have one moderate leak that was missed on the quote and that was the one that is, is in the old training room along the west side and they have since come out and fixed that. But again, it's going to be one of those constant maintenance roofs. And they'll be watching for more leaks and, and some of the other areas that were not, not in damage yet, but are going to probably start leaking, you know, soon.
And where are we on the tower?
The tower right now is, is, is in, Chief and I haven't had a formal meeting to discuss the direction, it's probably going to be looking at more of a repair. You're in the hundreds of thousands, maybe a little over a hundred thousand dollars to fix it versus three to tear it down, so you know, it's, it's crazy, we've had all the inspections on it, there's no hazmat in it, hazardous materials in it, that's all, that's all good. I've had two companies come out, Tiger Construction and a company out of Seattle that specializes in, in doing brick repair. They, they do all, a lot of the buildings down in the Seattle area that are, you know, hundreds of years old that and they're able to repair them and this guy came out and he says, oh, this is, this is, this is easy work for us, so. And other than the color of the brick will be a little bit different, it'll be, it'll be back to normal.
So, all right, thank you. Chief, do you want to address the Wiser Lake Station?
Yes, so shortly in the, right before the end of the, end of the year, last year, I met with Mike Kent, who's a realtor in Watcom County, I believe Windermere is the office he works for, we met at Station Seventy after the board directed us to, actually Mike Kent just popped in. Here he is.
All right, perfect timing.
Wonder if he was lurking on-
Yeah, he was, he was probably stalking us on YouTube. Mr. Kent, welcome to our meeting. Maybe?
Give him a minute to ask him to mute here. Anyway, Mr. Kent and I met late last year and I just had him do a quick assessment of the building. Or, you know, what? What did he think it could be used for, so looks like he's ready to, ready to go there, Mr. Kent?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yep, you sound great.
Very good, excellent. So you want me to go ahead and outline my synopsis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, to give you a little background, I had an opportunity to market the fire hall over in Custer. So that gave me a little bit familiarity as to who our best prospect would be for a purchaser. Somewhat similar in the Linden Fire Hall, you have a zoning that could be residential, but the size of the properties can be a bit of a challenge and the cost for someone to convert it to residential is probably going to be higher than they would expect to pay. I think the ideal purchaser, as was a purchaser in Custer, will be someone that wants a private storage facility, in the case of Custer, was a car collector, and I expect it to be the same thing. Part of what leads me to believe that would be our buyers because the success of storage units throughout Watcom County, be it in Linden, Ferndale, Blaine, storage units have gone up in price dramatically because there's simply not enough for the demand. If you go to buy one now, you're going to be on a waiting list, probably at the Flex Space on Portaway and Ferndale and will be waiting upwards of a year to get a unit, they are all sold. And the prices that they're selling at are around, it was two hundred forty thousand when I sent the follow-up from our meeting, Jason, it's actually gone up since then about another twenty to thirty thousand for a fifteen hundred square foot storage condo with a, like an eighteen foot door, thirty by, thirty by fifty. The fire hall is actually much larger than that, there's pluses and minuses, a plus is the space, obviously. The location is probably more geared towards someone that lives in the fairly close vicinity, people like to get to their toys if they're using it for cars and that, and it's not in a secure park. But having said that, the square footage, the number of vehicles that could be put there, the height, et cetera, I believe someone will pay certainly a premium to have that space. Could you do a commercial enterprise, say a landscape firm or a repair shop, whatnot? The challenge is going to be, I believe, having to get a conditional use permit from the neighbors in close proximity. And their concerns typically are going to be traffic, noise, et cetera, not that it can't be done, but it'll probably be a little more difficult purchase opportunity, and the other part of it is financing, they could probably get a commercial loan without a problem. On the individual side, they're going to probably have to do cash or get a non-conforming loan. And all that means is they're going to have to typically put more money down at a higher cost swing. Business-wise, it could be, it could be a fantastic shop for someone to do repair work and the like, but they'll simply have to go through the necessary hoops to do so. From a marketing standpoint, it will be in SEBA, which is Commercial Broker Association site, which I'm a member, so it'll get out to the commercial world. Certainly the multiple listing service, they will see it as well. And then we have a whole list of different things we do individually, above and beyond, be it networking and flyers and introduction. And with Windermere in particular, we've got about a hundred and twenty agents right now and chances are fairly high that it'll be someone within our rank, just based on the numbers. Price-wise, there aren't too many comps, comparables to draw from, but the few that I find, I think we're going to be optimistically, I think we're going to be around seven fifty on this building and certainly I would think we're going to be high sixes, but I would suggest that we start at about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and to replicate it, you're going to be spending close to that for sure, if you started with a raw piece of ground, services, structure, et cetera. It doesn't take long at all anymore, the cost of materials and construction, if you can find people to build it. Questions?
John, you're on mute.
Sorry about that, hey, Mike, with seven fifty, do you think this could get into like a bidding war?
I hope so. I hope so. It's really, it's really hard to predict in this marketplace. We we end up at bidding wars when we don't expect. But the the short answer is if there's two people that want it and are qualified, that's what happens. So I mean, they're they're not going to go to a number that makes no sense at all, but typically if a buyer is going to buy this for his own personal use, that means he can't find anything like it. And they will probably compete if they have, if they're affluent enough to be able to to get into a bidding competition with someone else. It could happen. You know, and the other, the other thing is you you can put it out there at five hundred and have a bidding war go up and up and up, but you're better to, I think, get close to what replacement is or market and then see what happens, so. That's a long answer, but I can't promise it, but it's certainly possible. It takes two buyers that want that property.
What is the square footage there?
We are fifty-seven hundred square feet. Yes, Jason gave me a nice outline of it. Here we go. Fifty-one hundred square feet. That includes the bays as well as the the space up front, the office, restrooms, et cetera. And the parking there is ideal as well, as you might expect.
A person purchasing it, Mike, for a storage unit, from what I'm hearing, would not have to do any zoning issues or apply for anything?
I believe there would be no issue unless unless you're running a commercial enterprise. I believe if it's just for someone for their own personal use, I don't believe that's the case. Jensen bought the one in Custer, and I don't think he had to do any special permitting. That was right in the town or city of Custer, but the buyer didn't want to verify that, but I can't imagine it being any need. When you get commercially, then you're probably going to have to go conditional use.
So as soon as you buy it and maybe rent out one or two stalls, that throws you into the commercial? Would that be correct?
Not, not necessarily. I mean, people, people rent garages in their house. Alright. People, yeah, it's, it may be one of those scenarios where you ask the county and get a different answer depending what you're going in there. I mean, it's it's kind of a gray area, but the buyer would want to verify that. What typically would happen is someone would buy it. And then their their brother Joe says, hey, can I put a car in there? Yeah, here's a couple. And it just happens.
All right, anyone else? Mike, what what do you see as a timeframe if, I mean, if we were, as a board, decided to move forward and surplus the station? Is there a better time to put this on the market?
Well, great question. There's no particular season for fire halls, however. There are no storage units available right now. And I I work with a couple of clients. They're not looking for someone perhaps, something quite this scale. They're trying to find a fifteen hundred square foot unit. I can't find. So supply and demand, the demand's there, there's no supply. Interest rates, if they do happen to get a loan, they are probably going to go up between now and the end of the year, maybe three quarters of a point. That's not a big presser. I think, I think now is as good a time as any because I can't imagine the market getting any tighter for storage units or any other real estate for that matter. We are, to give you a, to give you a quick idea how desperate things are, we have about a one and a half week supply of residential inventory. Period throughout Rockham County, which means if we didn't bring another house on in a week and a half at current sales rate, there wouldn't be a single house left. There's a hundred and fifty-six houses for sale of all of Rockham County. Which is normally we would have seven, eight hundred homes for sale. So the timing's good. Real estate is 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 kind of unhinged right now. And that's, that's part of the reason I think that high number is is attainable. So, and if you, if I were to hire someone tomorrow to build something like that, if I had a good piece of land, I'd probably be waiting at least a year or two before they could complete because the contractors are are busy and spoiled and it's hard to get things done. And supply and the cost of goods is off the charts.
All right. Any other questions? Mike, we appreciate that you took the time to meet with the chief and and go out there and and give us your professional advice about this. It's it's certainly something that's sort of been on our minds for a while. We have a lot of facilities that either aren't being used or now that our our levee lid lifts have failed, we're going to have to look for more ways to cut costs and and save money and generate some income, so. We need to make some tough decisions here, but the information you provided is very helpful.
Yeah, thank you. And I will let you know too. If, if you folks were to lease the building, that would be, I think, quite successful as well. I don't know whether that fits into your program. But that's also something that you might want to consider. For two reasons, I'm just being very, very honest with you. It's going to keep going up in value. And it would probably lease at a rate of probably twenty-five hundred to twenty-seven fifty, I would think, a month. And that would be that'd be certainly viable, but that may be complicated for the fire district to be leasing, but I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I think legally that's us being a landlord is
Okay, and I wasn't sure.
Paperwork wise, it's just not worth the administrative time.
I understand.
Yeah, I think there's, obviously, we run into some huge liabilities there. And, you know, part of our reason for sort of trimming down is the maintenance and upkeep and all the other crap that goes along with owning so many buildings, so. That's certainly something to consider.
Very good.
All right, any other questions for Mike? We'll let him get back to his normal job.
Yeah, but I got, I go back and help the neighbor again. Her husband passed away.
Oh, no.
And due to COVID, and she's trying to learn how to do everything and she's on her own. The kind of folks you you have as clients all the time, which is tough, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, appreciate you joining us today and we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kent.
Thank you.
Still on there? All right, so what do you guys want to do with this thing? Rich, what's your thoughts?
What are our costs right now to maintain this building, roughly?
I I can't say that I have the, it's, it's probably one of the cheaper ones to maintain. Because it's, it's high and dry. You know, unfortunately, the rest of ours are, seem to sit low and get wet, but it's, it's not exorbitantly expensive to maintain. It's just a huge asset and it's like money-wise, it's, it could replace apparatus that we currently don't have funds for. And that's the thing is we could turn this building and and put two tenders on the road or, you know, buy another engine, which is desperately needed. We don't use the building for anything other than storage. We have no vol, we have not had volunteers out of that station in years. You might be, the gentleman in the center of my screen might be the last active volunteer from Station seventy. Scott Brown, who was hired in two thousand and seven. So it's, you know, we've, we've had, we've had a couple volunteers since then, but it's not, we have not had active volunteers out of the station for seven to ten years. It's just, it's just not doing anything and it, it really doesn't. It's not in what I would say an optimal location for a station that we would expand and and say, put a crew in, you know, if we were say to move sixty-nine north, Station sixty-nine in Laurel North, that's not where I would want to put them. That puts them on a, you know, essentially a windy residential road. Or it dumps out on Hannigan with really a blind corner. We wouldn't, we wouldn't mark that as a, as a location to, to put a station. Frankly, it's kind of superfluous. It doesn't fit, it doesn't fit the model of the district anymore or the direction we're going.
Well, the timing seems right to move it then.
Yeah, I don't think the market's going to be any better than Mr. Kent explained to us. In our master plan, you know, this station was found to be in fair to good condition. It does not have facilities for twenty-four-hour staffing, including sleeping quarters, laundry or bunker gear extraction. Does not have an exhaust system for apparatus. Currently, this facility provides limited service to the district. That's what the report from ESCI gave us on it. I drove out there the other day. It's certainly not an easy station to get to. It's on a narrow, windy, two-lane road. It's really not close to anything as far except for residential properties. And when I did an evaluation of the levee lid lift, if you look at the voting population around that station, you see all that red? That community voted seventy-six percent no on the August levee lid lift and seventy-one percent in the November for a combined seventy-three percent no vote for levee lid lift. And I'm, I'm not saying that as like, oh, we should go punish these people and sell their fire station, but really, it's not being used. And I think we could actually better service that rural area if we, if we took the money that we have invested in that station and actually bought some tenders that would actually provide water supply if something bad did happen in that area. At this point, I don't think we get any bang for our buck out of that station. But, you know, I'm kind of the newer kid on the block. I've only been here six years. I don't know all the history and and why it was built or who built it or what the plan was, but I think if we look at our master plan, it really doesn't it doesn't fit where we're, where we're going. And I think part of our responsibility as a board is to look into the future and say, you know, is there going to be a super mall in that neighborhood in the near future? Probably not. Can we service it from either side or around? And it looks like we can, so. That's my position. John Crawford, you've been around longer than me.
This question's more for Jason. What's the state going to say when we decide to sell it? Insurance-wise, is that on the docket as showing for the insurance board? Does that show an active station?
So I did look at that, so road miles from Station sixty-nine and then road miles from Station seventy-five, which we have an auto eight agreement with. That, those two, those two, seventy-five and sixty-nine overlap in that area. Where we might see some difficulty or I would say, you know, where where we're going to run out of that five-mile limit is further west on the Van Dyke Road. But I, as I've said it, I've said it on on multiple meetings. I, I'm going to be honest with the WSRB and tell them we don't have anything out of there. You're, we're going to get a big fat zero for that station anyway. And, and honestly, those people in the Van Dyke area, you know, that they chose to live in a rural area and that's, that's the service that we can provide based on the the funds that we take in on from taxes. So I, I don't know. Yeah, it's going to change. I I believe it is going to change the the rating in that area. It was going to happen. It's going to happen either way. With factual reporting to WSRB come this, this July. But we, like I said, we do have an auto eight agreement with Linden. So that area overlaps the the Venn diagram or whatever, the circles overlap in that area. We're still, a majority of those people that, nothing, they're not going to see any change. And if I go back to the using that, you know, that's one-time money, so it's not, it's not a, it's not going to fix anything. But if we can increase you know, reduce the age of our thirty-some-odd-year-old, you know, our, we, our average age of tenders is thirty-some-odd-years-old. If we can show that we've got a couple ordered, that are going to, you know, add to the fleet, allow us to get rid of some of these old, old ones. You know, could that, could that help our WSRB rating? Absolutely.
I'm on board with what Rich and Bruce said. I, I think it's time to go ahead and move forward on this as well.
Especially if you look at it as, we're taking a, a facility we're not using and we're getting two new tenders. It's a good trade.
Kimberly?
I agree with everything you all have said because we're just putting out a lot of money for maintenance and insurance and taxes. And for really nothing in return, other than an asset. And so if we can turn that around and help offset some of our costs and our budgets, it's a win-win. And it's most definitely an optimal time to sell. Given the market and storage, we're in the same boat in our personal life, so we're very keenly aware of the limited amount of storage out there and the high demand to have that kind of a facility.
Okay, so we've done this before. Jenny was kind enough to, to provide me with the information on, there are no specific statutory requirements for the sale of property, equipment or supplies. Prior to disposing of such property, the board should declare by resolution the item surplus to the needs of the district. The district should then use commercially reasonable methods to sell the property. And there's, I have a copy of a resolution from twenty thirteen that declared the Linden Station as surplus. So we could by resolution probably check with Richard Davis and then have a resolution prepared for our next meeting to declare this station surplus, if that's the direction the board wants to move. Does that sound reasonable?
I'd be intrigued with that.
Okay, so I, I think we should then have a motion from the board that wishes to declare the Wiser Lake Station surplus and that we contact our legal counsel and make sure that we're meeting all the requirements. I'm assuming there's going to need to be a public hearing. Is what they did in the past for these, for the other station. But if we want to make a motion to move forward with that process, like, go ahead and accept that motion. All right, so chief, did that make sense that, that we'll make sure that it, it's the, the board, well, let's go ahead and any discussion, we've got a a motion to surplus with Wiser Lake Station, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, so my only discussion would be that we contact our legal counsel, that we get a, a resolution created. And that we determine if and when we would have to have a public hearing on this and then get it out on the market. So all in favor of the motion? All right, so it's unanimous. Thank you for your time and consideration. I, I, you know, I hate to get I hate to get rid of assets like this, but I think if we really look at our master plan and where we're headed, this just does not fit into the picture, so. Chief, do you have any questions?
Public hearing at the start of next month's meeting, sound okay to you? Or do you want to do it faster? I, I think that, that'd be my recommendation.
Definitely. Yeah, if we can get, if we can get. Everything ready to roll for the next meeting, that would, that would be good. And then I, I think getting it on the market. In the end of February, if we can do that would, would be a good thing.
Let me, let me check with Jenny and make sure that that's a timeframe. You can work in and we'll. Get that done.
All right, thank you. New business. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one surplus equipment donation. This is. Bunker gear, yes? And there's a bunch of serial numbers and stuff here, and I think the intent was to try to either donate it. To. Firefighters without borders or some organization that could put this stuff to use. So, resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one. Is declaring the following turnout gear surplus, which is listed. By serial number. And. The staff is directed to make contact with an organization as described above and arrange donation of the bunker gear as noted in exhibit A in accordance with. All applicable statutes. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Don't move.
Discussion. John, do you have a source, resource? Or you'll be in touch with the chief?
Yeah, I can get that taken care of.
All right, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, John.
And, yeah, Chief Ward is. Commissioner Crawford to get this done, so.
All right. Board elections and representation at outside meetings. So in January, per our. Little bylaws, we say that we elect the chair and vice chair. And so I will open the floor for nominations. For the position of chair of this board.
Nominate Bruce Ansel.
My second.
I just can't step backwards fast enough, Ken.
You do a great job.
I appreciate that. It's, it's, it's been challenging but quite rewarding. So is there any other nominations for the chair position? All right, hearing and seeing none, all in favor? All right, thank you. And then vice chair. I know. Rich might have a suggestion here, but.
And now make John Crawford.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? All in favor? All right, Rich, thank you for your time as both chair and vice chair. I know that your life's focus is, is. Is changed somewhat now and we certainly appreciate all the time and effort that, that you have. Given the district and I'm not letting you go yet. I think you still got, you still owe us another year, but. I do value your history and your knowledge. And your level-headed thinking abilities that you've provided to me. And I still have your number and I'm gonna keep calling you, so. You're never, you're never gonna get totally out, but thank you for all the time and effort you've put in so far.
Very welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosman.
And John, now you have to answer the text I sent you the other day.
I have to answer that?
Yeah, I think I sent you a message as, addressed to the potential vice chair. Anyway, all right, congratulations. All right, so now representation outside meetings. John, you've been going to the. Lockham County Fire Commissioners. And doing a great job there. Are, are you sort of representing the north? End of the district?
Yeah, your guess is as good as mine. Once we get a new president in there, I'm gonna concrete that in, so. I, I have been. I, I was asked, but then we found out that we had to be voted in to do that, so. Basically, once a new president. And they're all off to go from there.
Okay, do you want to continue attending those meetings?
Sure, yeah, it's good times as, as you know.
Yeah, all right, um, any, any other representation? We, we did have, I was attending the Blaine City Council meetings. For a time earlier on. When I started here, of course, that's when we could do things in person and now it's all via Zoom and, and. Do you think it's useful to have representation there, chief? Or I know that.
Fire, fire marshal goes. It could be, it could be useful to have one, whether myself or one of you go to that meeting. Just to be a presence and let them know that we're interested in what's going on in the city of Blaine.
What I have done in the past was just kind of look at their agenda ahead of time and see if there was anything that was of pertinence to us. Because they can sometimes go on longer than me on topics about, you know, sewers and. And annexations and, and stuff like that. So I don't know. Kimberly, is that something you might be interested in, in keeping an eye on?
When do they, when do they meet?
It's like the Mondays, the first, second, fourth Monday or something like that.
Second, fourth Monday, correct.
And they have a website that, you know, they'll, they'll post a day or two ahead of what their agenda is gonna be. And then. Maybe if you could coordinate with Lieutenant Nielsen on anything that might. He might think would be needed. I, I don't think it's something you need to go to every meeting on, but perhaps if, if we can get a. A foothold in there a little bit. I mean, they're a big voting block. If we ever need to pass something, it would be nice to have a. A relationship with them and, and commitment from them on, on our issues as well.
I'm willing to give it a try.
And I, you can. Commissioner McMurray, feel free to, to chat with me about that. Maybe when you come in to sign today.
I was just gonna say that.
We can, we can talk about it and get you set up and I'll give you some background.
Yeah, and who to connect with.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, like I said. I maybe went to like five or six meetings in a year. When Henry was still here and I would say out of those five or six, I probably really didn't even need to be at those. But it was just sort of in person, it was nice to put a face on the fire district. So, anything else we should? Be. On, John, have you got anything else we should be keeping an eye on?
What about the Birch Bay Chamber? Are we still on that?
Um, I, I mean, since I live in that community, I kind of stay in touch with. Kathy and Dora Lee on a regular basis. We, they're, unfortunately, their meetings are the same time as, as our meetings. They're on Thursday at. Eleven or twelve now, so they. We line up at the exact same time. But I get all of their notifications and I walk by Dora Lee's house every other day anyway. I think that's. And, and actually, I, you know, I, I was, I. Know Danielle down at the Visitor Center and Sasha now, who is their administrator. I know all those people, so I, I try to stay in touch with what's going on there. Informally, formally and formally.
I can't, I can't think of any others than that myself.
Okay, Rich, you got any? Places we need to have a presence?
No, unless something comes up at Linden City Council that we need to be present at, I can step in for that.
All right, future funding discussions. Chief, is there anything that? We need to. Jump on right now. I think we're planning on. Meeting with Karen Reed in Feb, early February.
Early February, yeah. I was gonna, she's, she's on, she takes January off, so. Was gonna start hitting her with emails next week and see if we can get some stuff on the books for early February. And I don't know if it. Maybe for the full board, if we, if we want it to be a full board meeting, or do you want to create a, you know, have a, a point person? Where Karen and someone, you know, one commissioner from District Twenty One, one commissioner from District Four. Could meet and have these discussions and then report back to the entire board, just to make it less cumbersome and, and. Move a little faster. We don't have a lot of time.
Yeah, no, I, I'm okay with that. You know, we got a, a lot of quick things we gotta deal with. And sort of in the back of my mind, I'm thinking. More like a District Four Commissioner of what the heck are we gonna do? But that's not necessarily our problem. But I think we need to convince them that it is their problem and. This year is gonna scream by. And they're gonna have to decide. How to fund the fire department. On our end, we have probably a couple of years before we're in dire straits. Got the library issue coming up in February and we got the EMS levy coming up in November. Is that?
August.
August is the EMS levy?
Pretty sure they're gonna be on the August ballot.
All right, so I mean, I don't think we should even consider trying to get out on a levy. For us. On top of either one of those. So that puts us into next year planning phase for funding.
Which I still think is a tight timeline based on our recent experience. We obviously have to retool how we do things and. You know, is it, is it gonna be a levy? Is it gonna be a bond? Is it gonna be bake sale? You know, what? What does our future funding request from the public look like and really getting it nailed down and. The meeting that we had with. This is, this Sewell, can't remember her last name, sorry. Argo, yep, Margot, Seville, was very interesting in. Now that we've taken a couple, you know, we've, we've had two levy attempts. Now we have data, which we didn't have before. So, and she is, what she did with outreach and social media and PR was purely on the data side. So she is definitely a blessing and someone that, a type of person we didn't have before who can look at what we did, look at the message. Look at how it resonated, you know. She had some, some interesting things to say right off the top, but, but we, we don't have a ton of time for District Twenty One alone. And certainly not for the, the combined four and twenty-one together. So we kind of gotta take two angles on this. Both a, a group, group chat and then, and then a singular district. Look at future financing.
All right, so I guess step one for us would be to surplus a fire station and maybe generate some funds. To purchase some equipment. And then. Monitor how these other. Levy issues are going. And start thinking of a plan, whether it's bonding or levy lid lifts or both. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if the public responds better to, hey, all of our fire trucks just broke down and our stations don't. And they're not safe to be in anymore. We need money. If that resonates more than, you know, we need to lift the lid so that we can provide service. I, I'm not sure. It's, it's a, it's a tough community.
And so I, I think the first thing is, is, is would the board be okay with having a, a point person? You know, appointing a, a messenger to, to work with Karen Reed and myself and. Whoever District Four decides to start getting some of this stuff done. I think we could just, as a smaller group, we can move faster. And then report.
Probably be the board president, correct?
We don't have a president. I, I enjoy working with Karen. I'd be happy to do it. I think I've. Pretty much understand our background up to this point and, and have enough. Spare time to be able to commit to that.
Is District Four up to a full board yet or are they still waiting on a third?
We are putting out the advertisement today.
So they'll have thirty days.
They'll have, well, yeah, it's a thirty day advertisement and then we'll do, my suggestion to them is gonna be similar to how District Twenty One does it, which is. A full board interview. You know, like, like we did for Commissioner McMurray. Way back when.
So hopefully by the end of February, they'll, they'll be done.
Yes, legally, we cannot do any RFA. Yeah, we're not talking RFA stuff right now. We're just talking about. What are we go, we're, we're talking about what are we going to talk about? You know, merge, RFA consolidation, bankruptcy, what? What's on the table? We can, you know, interformal or restart the RFA talks until they have a full board.
So we, we've kind of moved on to the next item of new business, which is a District, District Four Plan of Action and. And I think. To summarize that, it would be Jason and I will be working with Karen Reed and District Four Board to start meeting and coming up with some. Thoughts and ideas. Is that fair?
And, and dates. Well, I'll reach out to Commissioner. Land and we'll get some dates in February and I'll send those to Karen and we'll get, they'll be all Mondays. So, hope Monday works for you, Commissioner Ansel. To get some, yeah, get some dates on the calendar so we can start meeting and. Figure out what they're gonna do.
All right, any other comments on that? Fire chief performance review was done. At our meeting in January, Chief. Just for the board's knowledge, that was done on the seventh. So his annual review. View has been completed. If anyone has any questions about that, I would be happy to answer those offline. But I, I guess my, my biggest comments are is thank you, chief, for all the hard work that you're putting in. I think we're moving in the right direction. I, I think you're doing a, a great job and. We've ticked off a, a couple of projects. The, the promotional stuff has gone through. We've. We've, we've got a, some chief help in the office. We've. Taken over District Four's administrative services and. Yeah, we're, we're, we're moving good. We've got a training captain. Hired now, so things, things are. We're, we're climbing out of the rut here a little bit.
Yeah, if I, if I could just for a second, I do, yeah, it does feel like we're getting a couple of projects done. Certainly what I've learned during my time in this office is I'm not gonna get everything done. This is like pushing a rope uphill. I, I couldn't, I couldn't do, I couldn't have received the review I, I got without. Without the staff, both the non-represented staff and the, the line staff. And, and the volunteers, you and their part. This whole thing works because everybody shows up every day. And, and does what they need to do and every day they go above and beyond. Sometimes it's big enough to see it. Sometimes nobody even notices it. Sometimes it's big enough to see it. Sometimes nobody even notices it, but every, everybody in this organization um, propels all of us forward. And, and I only got the review I did. Um, and the comments you just said is because everybody's doing everything all the time. Um, as Scott said, you know, just recently, we have just been, for a fifty-person department, we've been essentially decimated by, by COVID, by the Omicron version of COVID. Um, and we're in our second wave right now and the troops are stepping up and, um, they are, they are working the overtime, uh, way beyond the limits. Um, hopefully all of us not watching, but yeah, we're having, we're having to, to bend, bend the, bend but don't break, um, on, on people working and people are helping each other out. Um, it's great to see everybody pull together. It's unfortunate that it is in, you know, a time where people are, are your employees are getting sick. Um, not, they're wearing their PPE, they're doing their job correctly. It's just the community saturated and, um, everybody's tired and beat down. When you get tired and beat down, you get sick. Um, but yes, we do have a training captain coming. Um, thanks to all the, you know, once again, the line staff and the, and the non-represented staff that, that put together an excellent assessment center. And, um, so I'm, I'm hopeful. I, I see, I'm starting to see some, some pinpricks of light at the end of this tunnel that we're, we're actually making some headway. So, um, thank you for all your support. Um, thank you for, for, um, caring about everybody and, um, I just, I, I love working for this department. I love working for our people and look forward to a better year.
Well, we certainly appreciate everything everyone is doing. Correspondents, Chief, um, there, there was a letter addressed to our board and, um, based on, uh, an issue over a volunteer jacket. Is that been? I, I, it was in our packet, so I just, if there's any clarification that anyone needs, uh, is that been resolved?
I, I've not received any further communication, so I believe it's been resolved.
Okay.
I will, you'll be the fir, you'll know before I will if it has not been.
All right.
Um, as evidenced by the letters sent to each of you. Um, but I hopefully you know that I treat everybody with respect and kindness and.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I'm sorry that it has, things like this have to rise to this level and, uh, you know, I appreciate the communications from the concerned citizen and, um, I wish we didn't have to waste, uh, any more time on things like that, but appreciate your professionalism in dealing with it. Um, announcement for the, uh, board meeting attendance, uh, February seventeenth, is that, uh, working for everyone?
Yeah.
Works for me.
That's it, that's at eleven o'clock, correct? Just.
Yes, I think we've, we, uh, adopted all meetings start at eleven, uh, this year, so. Agenda items for next meeting. So, uh, we've got the, uh, Weiser Lake Station, um, follow-up, uh, of scheduling and/or a public hearing if necessary. I'm probably as keep District Four on the agenda. What am I leaving out here?
Future funding be on the agenda?
Are you going to have that division chief contract?
Yes, we'll have the DC contract.
Okay. All right. We need to have an executive session. Um, this is per RCW forty-two point three zero point one four zero, section four subsection A. Uh, collective bargaining sessions with employee organizations, including contract negotiations, grievance meetings and discussions relating to the interpretation or application of a labor agreement or that portion of a meeting during which the governing body is planning or adopting the strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during the course of any collective bargaining, professional negotiations or grievance remediation proceedings or reviewing the proposals made in negotiations or proceedings while in progress. I'm going to say fifteen minutes. It's twelve nineteen, um, Chief, uh, Vanderveen can attend. Uh, Sean, I'll let you go back to your regular work, uh, and the board. Scott, we will not include you in the executive session. Thank you and good luck with, uh, your recovery. And again, congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you, appreciate it.